Worked with the Parks Board to institute a tobacco-free Parks Rule for this coming season. So I want to thank Grace for her activism. Four candidates are competing for three seats on the Oshkosh City Council. Alphabetically, the incumbents are Steve Herman, Lori Palmieri, and Caroline Pansky. The challenger is Matt Muggerar. The term of office for council members is two years. Our timekeeper will give you cues and we thank you in advance for keeping your answers short so that we may cover as many issues as possible. Audience questions addressed to all candidates are welcome. Please submit them in writing to the League representatives who will be circulating among you. Candidates receive the first two questions in advance. Opening statement, and this will be a three-minute statement because it's longer. Summarize your background, qualifications, and your reason for seeking election or reelection to the position of Oshkosh City Councilor. Second part, in your opinion, what are the key upcoming city-related opportunities, initiatives, positives of some kind to be addressed? And we'll do this alphabetically, starting with Steve Herman.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm a retired sheriff's deputy. I retired in 2009 after a thirty-plus-year career at the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office, finishing up as the Crime Prevention and Community Programs Coordinator for the Sheriff's Office. I was elected in 2010 to the City Council. I'm finishing my fourth term to the council. And three times during my time on the council, I've been appointed from within the council as the Deputy Mayor. And the Deputy Mayor's role for the council is to lead the council in co-session, and then to evaluate and work with the council to evaluate the city manager in his role. I believe that I bring experience to council. I've been in public service my whole professional career. I feel that I understand the needs and the demands that Oshkosh and the surrounding area is concerned about. I feel that I listen to the facts on issues that come in front of the council, and I make a decision that I believe in the best interest of the City of Oshkosh and its citizens. I make myself available. I attend many public functions. I may attend many chamber commerce functions, county functions. I'm on a Rethink Coalition. So I make myself available so that citizens can contact me, and I make it a point to get back to them, whether it's a phone call or an email. I do get back to citizens. I respond at appropriate time. I also think they represent the city and its citizens with respect and dignity, and I feel that my decisions has helped move Oshkosh forward and has put us in a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have time, I think, to talk about opportunities and initiatives?
Okay, I could go on to that, sure. For eighteen, I'm very interested in making sure that our two recently developed TIF districts, TIF thirty-four and thirty-five, get developed. They're the Oshkosh Corp. TIF and the Oshkosh Avenue TIF. I feel that they are a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the City of Oshkosh and the surrounding community, and I'd like to be on the council to help move them forward. I also want to see more development in the Sawdust District. We're all excited about seeing the arena, the nomination arena, and the importance of that. And build on the development of our aviation industrial park. Once we get the taxiway in from Winnebago County, I think we'll see quite a bit of development in the aviation park. And then finally, the transload facility that was developed in the Southwest Industrial Park, I believe will have extensive growth in that area. So economic development is one area that I think we have opportunities, working with the Chamber, GoADC, and all our other partners. Public-private partnerships are a big priority for me on council, and I think it's very important that we continue to move forward with those type of initiatives.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt Muggerar.
Well, thank you for the League Women Voters for hosting the forum. This is one of the few places that the citizens can actually hear what their candidates think right from their mouths and really dive into what we see for our future in the City of Oshkosh. First, Matt Muggerar. I'm a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, born and raised on the South Side, and currently live on the West Side with my wife Lindsay and our three children. Worked for Foreimprint, one of the nation's best companies to work for. Been there about twelve years. And along with my wife, we are a small business owner in this community, too. Served currently on three different boards and commissions within the school district and the city, the Oshkosh Area School District, Recreation Department, Softball Commission, chaired the Rental Housing Advisory Board for the City of Oshkosh, as well as recently appointed to the Long Range Finance Committee for the City of Oshkosh as well. So very active, very engaged. And something that's very passionate for me is the youth in our community. I'm a member of the Oshkosh Mid-Morning Kiwanis, as well as a youth sports coach. Oshkosh West Basketball Club, youth soccer, youth softball. Very active, very engaged. Why am I running? I believe in this community. We have what it takes to keep building upon the success we've had the last few years. This is a great place to live, a great place to raise a family, and I couldn't be more proud to try to put my thumbprint on that as well. We have what it takes to keep building upon making this a better place to live, work, and play. I love the motto that we have. This is a good community for that. Our quality of life is very positive in this community, and we have to do whatever we can to continue that positive track. Some of the things I think I could bring to council, a voice of reason, a voice of common sense, a fresh take and new ideas to this council. After a certain amount of time, you know, whether councils become jaded or become disengaged with different groups or different issues, it is time to refresh those and to bring some new blood to the ideas and new blood to the life of the council. I would be and am visible. I'm active, I'm engaged in my community, I'm invested in my community. This is my home, I love it, and would continue that if proudly elected as well.
Did you have any upcoming city opportunities, initiatives, positives?
Absolutely, yeah. Not to piggyback off Mr. Herman, but economic development is number one. Whether it's the Sawdust District, the remaining seventy acres of land along the Gulf Shore, Lake Shore Gulf Course area, Southwest Industrial Park, all those things are vital to this community. They're all different, and they're extremely important to how we keep moving Oshkosh forward. Because if we're not growing, we're dying.
Okay, thank you. Lori Palmieri.
Thank you to the League and thank you for everyone that's in attendance this evening. My name's Lori Palmieri. I've served the city the last two years on council, hitting the ground running by initiating the lead pipe notification to homeowners, and I've worked with individuals and served on organizations and boards on a number of issues of concern to the community. I'm Principal Consultant for Palmieri and Associates Planning Support, advising nonprofits and small businesses in the Upper Midwest. I'm also employed by the Oshkosh Area School District as a part-time substitute teacher for K through twelve, and I run a small hobby business restoring furniture. My master's is in urban planning, and I received that at UW Milwaukee, as well as a bachelor's from UW Oshkosh in Urban and Regional Studies. I live in a dense downtown neighborhood with my husband and help care for four generations of my family here in the city. I walk, bike, and take transit, as well as play the role of minivan chauffeur in all my spare time. The reasons I seek reelection, as I said two years ago, I care about your future now. I have been asked by community members to seek reelection to continue those efforts that I've initiated and supported over the first term, demonstrating in action that care and concern. While it's been a challenging two years, there have been encouraging moments of positive change. However, the council continues to evolve and needs continued servant leadership. While positive support on some issues is needed, there are times when selective screening out of other matters is equally necessary. I feel I add that level of discernment. City opportunities are positive. The city is on the move and progress towards a more inclusive and engaged community. We continue to move towards adding family-supporting wage jobs, affordable and safe housing, a critical area for this community that we have to act on. And we've begun the task of addressing transportation equity among auto, bike, pedestrian, and transit. And most importantly, I feel that we are starting to touch on the area of inclusion in terms of initiatives to make this a more inclusive community.
Okay, thank you. Caroline Pansky.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Caroline Pansky. I am currently serving on the Oshkosh Common Council. I am also serving as the Chair of the Transit Advisory Board. I serve on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee and on the Arts and Beautification Committee as well. Before I go into the rest of my spiel, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women's Voters for hosting this forum, especially on International Women's Day. As a female in local politics, it is very empowering to be a part of this. In the past, gosh, four years, this has become one of my favorite parts of running a campaign. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to the public tonight. As I stated before, I am currently serving on the end of my second term. Hard to believe it's been four years already. I did say in the very beginning that I would be a part of this and I would serve in this role as long as I was enjoying myself. Call me crazy, but I am. We must be doing something, something good, something's clicking. It's really hard to deny the progress in this city in the past few years. And I'm not saying that it's all me. Being up on this dais is an incredible amount of teamwork. I do think I bring a different perspective to this dais. I represent somebody without, you know, an entire career in the public sector. I've been working at a small, local candy store for the past thirteen years, raising my two kids here. I love this town, that's why I wanted to get involved. The biggest motivator for seeking reelection at this time for me personally is Oshkosh Corp. This was the biggest thing to hit my desk in the past four years. Literally holding the future of this municipality in my hand was beyond stressful. I can't even put that into words. And I am not ready to walk away from this project at this time. We've done amazing things. We've torn down buildings and put up even better ones. We've nearly completed trails, we've put in bike lanes. But this is one building that I need to see completed. This is one ribbon that I really want to see cut. This is something that I want to see through to the end.
Okay, thank you. Next question they also received in advance. This is related to challenges. In your opinion, what city-related challenges, problems, changes, open-ended, but on the negative side, need to be addressed? And the time limit here is two minutes each. And Caroline, this time, we start with you.
Okay. Right back into Lake Shore. This is going to continue to be one of the biggest issues facing Oshkosh, not only for us, but the entire Fox Valley. As a council, we have a lot to deal with. We have infrastructure, we have roads, we have an entire area, an entire neighborhood that we're going to change the face of, and in my opinion, all too quickly. I do think that we need to slow down a little bit and do one thing at a time, put one foot in front of the other. We are changing this landscape in a very dynamic fashion, and I really believe that we need to do this right. With the help of Polco, we have gotten feedback from our citizens. We've had meetings, but I still don't think it's enough. There's seventy acres out there yet to deal with, and I want to make sure that this is done in a common-sense fashion. I'm excited that there are developers that are ready to go, shovel-ready, you know, let's get this done. But I want to make sure that this is something that is going to last beyond, you know, my stay here, my children's stay here, something that we can be proud of another hundred years down the line. I do think that at times the city has an issue with listening to its residents. You know, we get this goal in mind, and we put our blinders on, and we just go for that finish line. And I really think it's time that we can slow down and really listen and just get this right.
Thank you. Lori Palmieri, your turn.
For challenges, I see a continued need for improvement in timely and accurate information coming out of City Hall. That includes council communications, staff communications, whenever any of our citizens make contact seeking information or assistance. There's been some improvement, but we need to continue these efforts in this area. We also need to consider future generations and all our decisions. It's of utmost importance by making wise, sustainable decisions and choices in land management and spending. I think that the City of Oshkosh needs to significantly improve our quality of life. We have commenced several initiatives in that regard. We also need to strengthen the local economy. We can't rely upon just one or two major employers. But this isn't simple, it's not simply answered by a magic bullet, a single effort. It takes all those moving parts of the community to partner and engage in this way. With that said, there are a number of areas that could go a long way towards improving that quality of life, not just for a few, but for many. Inclusion of those individuals that have been overlooked, I believe can both strengthen the economy and quality of life. And lastly, City of Oshkosh government improvement occurs when it's held accountable through having the courage to raise the expectation of staff and programming, as well as citizens in the community. My vision for this next council is to improve its communication and modeling the way to affect change in an adult manner.
Thank you very much. Matt Muggerar, your turn.
Thank you. I think the number-one challenge that council faces is always budget. It takes, you know, six to eight months of tireless work among staff and council to really come up with a plan to move the city forward over the next year. There's many constraints within the city budget. Obviously, we have stagnant or reduced state aid, which drives up dependence on property taxes, and nobody likes their property taxes going up. So we have issues that derive our bottom line that sometimes are out of our control. Yet, how we react is completely within our control. How we react to sudden or urgent needs for large developments has impacts on the budget. State aid is also something that we've got to work with our local legislators to increase so we can have more flexibility, more freedom to do the things we want to while on council. There's many things, many programs that we would all love to try to fund or additional personnel to bring on, yet with a very small margin of play when it comes every, you know, October, November, we don't have much money to really play around with. So those things get tight and get very tough, and that affects our infrastructure. We have some bad roads. It's not a new thing. Nobody's going to be shocked by me saying, you know, we have poor quality of roads that need to be improved. So all those things, they have an effect on the quality of life in this community. We do have a community engagement issue. We need to be more engaged as a community. Polco is a great thing that was recently introduced. However, the masses don't know about it. We've got to get the word out. You've got to find ways to engage with the members of this community to get the true opinions of all, not just the few that are loudest. One last thing is also a community issue of homelessness and the underserved that really needs to be talked about alongside the diversity and inclusion.
Okay, thank you. Steve Herman.
Thank you. I think debt. We continue to play catch-up with our deteriorating infrastructure from years of neglect. We need to figure out better how we can replace the infrastructure, but not put it always on the back of the taxpayers and the businesses in the Oshkosh area. We've done a good job of reducing our debt, and we're continuing to work on that, but I do think we need to go deeper into some of the areas of how we get into our budgets and how we make our budget put together. I think six to eight months to do the budget takes too long. It's too drawn-out process. I think we need to be better responding to that. Housing, we need to continue to look at single-family housing in the Oshkosh area. We have plenty of blighted areas in our neighborhoods. We need to develop a better strategy. We have our Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives, which is working on it. We also have some other, Housing Authority is working on some things. But there might be areas of the city where we need to tear down or rehab a whole neighborhood. We don't know. But we don't have a plan for that, so we need to do that. I also think we need to develop a growth plan. We're annexing areas of the city. Recently, we annexed thirty, forty acres of land on Ninth and Queerville Road. Is the fire department and the police department able to handle those services? The infrastructure's there, but do we have a plan for that? And then I also think we need to, a lot of times, decisions come to council, but as a couple other council members stated, decisions are being made in City Hall, and we're not part of those decisions. And we need to figure out a better rapport with staff so that we can stay in tune with those decisions and be part of that discussion. So by the time it comes to council, we've had our input, our boards and commissions have weighed in, and we can make a sound decision that's in the best interest of the City of Oshkosh and the citizens that we represent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Grace has our first question submitted by the audience.
The Oshkosh School Board and City Council member, or the City Council met in a workshop session to discuss the need for free bus transportation for Oshkosh students. The Oshkosh School budget already supports a limited number of bus passes. What role do you guys think should the city play in that?
And we'll start with Lori Palmieri.
That's a really great question. The role that City Council and the city staff can play in that is being supportive of bringing forth information, factual information, so that as council and the school board work together, you know, we can come up with a workable solution. I actually recently, just this week, took a student to get a bus pass. They applied for it through St. Vincent's and was approved, and then rode the bus with them to show them how to use the bus pass. And it was interesting because we had to ride for half an hour to get to a transfer station four blocks away, which was then five minutes from the middle school. So I think that council can work with staff and can also work with the public on improving our transit program.
Okay, thank you. Steve Herman, how about you next?
Well.
On bus passes.
Okay, yeah. On the bus passes, first off, School Board Member Bob Peschel offered to chair a task force to look into the, a more deeper delve into the busing issue because he believes it's a bigger issue than just students getting to school. He believes that there's a transportation gap for underserved people, which are students that can't get to school either. So he's chairing a committee, and I believe several council members are going to be working with him. But I do think it's a solvable solution. I know that the statistics have shown that there's a lot of stress in these students that can't get to school on time. So we need to work together to come up with a solution that is best for those underserved students that need an opportunity to get to school.
Okay, thank you. Caroline, how about you?
Thank you. I actually will be serving on that committee that Deputy Mayor Herman was talking about. So that is one example of how we can reach across these tables and get these things accomplished. Since Go Transit is a city-run transit program, we do have a large role in this. Obviously, it comes down to funding. These buses are not free, they are not cheap, they do require maintenance, they require drivers. There's a whole aspect of funding to this as well, unfortunately. And budgetary constraints do play a role in that as well. So the money situation is something that we should be able to control. Another way that we can help is by leading by example. I think Council Member Palmieri stated her example just fine. Let's reach out to our community members. If there's somebody struggling, let's talk to them, let's see how we can help them. I walk my two children to school every day, and now I have a neighbor that joins us with her three kids. There was another neighbor that we reached out to because he was struggling to get to school. And it was just a simple act of communication and seeing what we could do to help. So by leading example and simply asking, you can accomplish a lot as well.
Thank you. Matt Muggerar.
No, we do have an underserved problem in this community, whether it's at the school level or at the, you know, the home front as well for the less privileged. It's a community issue, and it's going to take a community to solve it. The School Board and the City Council did meet, I watched that. What I found interesting was that several of the School Board officials themselves questioned some of the data, some of the information that really brought that group together. So as Ms. Palmieri mentioned, getting accurate information and finding the true cause of those issues is extremely important to trying to find a solution. You've got to really know what the root cause is first. Funding is obviously an issue. Anything with city budgets is an issue. But if we can find $100,000 for aesthetic improvements on a bathroom pump house at Mary Jewel Park, we can find funding to get kids to school if they need it, as in any other of these smaller vital programs that we need.
Okay, thank you very much. Grace, do you have a question?
Yep, this one's from the audience as well. And it asks, what impact do you think diversity has in Oshkosh, and how would you make it more inclusive?
Question is on diversity. And we'll start with Matt.
Oshkosh has a small diversity issue. We have an inclusion problem. We have segmented parts of the community that need to come together. There has to be a community conversation. We can't have people talking at each other. You've got to have people talking to and with each other to really find reasonable solutions and reasonable ways to make this a more inclusive community. On a business front, there's a reason that Fortune 500 companies like Oshkosh Truck locate in Chicago and DC and New York. It's because they have access to millions of people with extremely diverse backgrounds. We're privileged that they decided to choose and stay here. We have to have a diverse and inclusive community that can support a company like that or any other company that needs diverse workforce. And every single company needs a diverse, educated, well-informed workforce.
Okay, thank you. Caroline?
Back in, I believe it was January, Citizens for Strong Oshkosh had a community update and invited members, representatives from other institutions here in Oshkosh to give us an update on what they were up to. And the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Chancellor, Andrew Levitt, was there, and he gave some incredible data on their inclusion and their diversity. And I think having those public-private relationships and reaching out to these other members of the community that have embraced this is going to be a valuable asset. We have had a couple of opportunities to have a diversity coordinator in our budget for the past couple of budget cycles, and unfortunately, we just haven't been able to figure that out. I put it in the budget again this year, and unfortunately, it did not, still did not move forward. I do think that we do need somebody strong and brave to come up and just show us what to do. Oshkosh has not really embraced that quite yet, and I think now's the time.
Okay, thank you. Steve Herman.
Thank you. We didn't hire specifically a diversity coordinator, but we did hire an HR specialist that is focusing on bringing minorities into the city's workforce. But I do think that we're fortunate with having diversity in our community by our universities, our technical colleges, our two-year schools. I think that we are an open community. I think it becomes, what do we have to offer those folks? Is it jobs? Is it education? And I think we have that. And I think we are getting more and more diversified, and I think it's a more open dialogue, open discussion. Our churches are much more open to having that discussion, and I think we do a fairly good job. But we can always be much more inclusive, we can always be much more open and be respectful of every culture, every race, every background that comes into the City of Oshkosh.
Okay, thank you. Lori Palmieri.
So diversity means different things to different people. And I guess I won't go into all of those breakdowns because I think everyone here knows what we mean when we say diversity. We're talking about different and other than what we're used to seeing. And I guess, you know, my first question would be, do, you know, how many people here know that there are over 50 languages spoken in this school district, in this school district, Oshkosh area? And I think that in order to be more inclusive, it really is up to each person for us to open our hearts and open our minds to others. And I just want to quote Keith Love, this basketball player, I hope it was basketball, that said, or wrote an essay that, you know, everybody is going through something. So whether it's ethnic, racial, socioeconomic, you know, abilities, physical abilities, mental abilities, you know, we really do need to be more embracing of others.
Okay, thank you very much. How about an expense question now? Matt mentioned expenditures. If you believe that city expenditures need to be reduced, what are possible areas for cuts? On the other hand, are there areas currently in need of increased funding that might require an increase in taxes? If so, what are they? In only one minute, of course. And I think we'll start with Steve Herman.
Wow, thank you. That's a tough question. Because every year, we look at ways to, first we look at the state. When the state comes out with their levy limits, what, how does that have an impact in our budget? Then we look at expenditure restraints. What can we spend? What can we do? What can we not do? But it goes back to that debt because our infrastructure is weak, so we have to continue to focus on reducing our debt. And I think sometimes, we always think that it's through cutting personnel. And sometimes it might be actually cutting services. We've talked about that at times. Are there services that could be cut? We talk about quality of life issues. Could there be some areas in the quality of life area? We have quite a few parks in rec, but people want the grass cut. People want the ball diamonds maintained. So it's very difficult to cut areas without cutting something from one area to cut in another area. And so-
I didn't give you enough time. I'm waiting to have to stop.
All right, that's fine.
Sorry, we can go, if we have enough, we'll come back to this. Matt Mugirar, how about you?
Well, part of the areas that if you ask me where we could find some fat to trim, I really think outside engineering services, we've got to find a way to get those costs under control. We don't bid out enough. In fact, we don't bid out really at all. Our stormwater, our sanitary sewer, those types of engineering services, as well as the project management that goes along with those. We're talking several hundred thousands of dollars into the millions of dollars over the course of a year that it really adds up, and we're not bidding these things out. We do not know if these are competitive rates. And that's a way to find some possible funding. Possible increases, I would love to find ways to increase funding for the vice narcotics unit that the chief has and is excelling very well. I think it's having a good impact on our community with the, obviously, the drugs, the human trafficking. Those are things that I think we can all get behind, that a safer community is important. And if we can find funding for something like that, I'd absolutely be all on board.
Thank you very much. Lori Palmieri.
So areas for reduction, I would agree with Council Member Herman here that in the area of quality of life, I think we need to look at our needs versus wants in terms of services and programming and doing or spending on things because we always have. And I would also agree with Mr. Mugirar that contractual services could be reduced in specific areas. As far as increasing funding, I think that we really, really have to spend some money on refurbishing and redeveloping our housing stock and building those neighborhood assets in our community.
Okay, thank you. Caroline Pansky.
Thank you. Well, the first example is what happened with Mary Jewel Lift Station. I voted against that increase just for aesthetics. Spending like that is not acceptable to me. Those are things that I would definitely fight moving forward. I stand by my no vote on that issue, and I would do it again. Spending that money on that is not a necessity. There are other things to spend that money on. Planning, we recognized as a council that city services such as police and fire are going to be a need. Retirements are going to be an issue, and that we need to make sure that these services are met for the community, the needs of the community. We actually put that as a goal into our city manager's goal for the upcoming year. So we're realizing that these things are going to come into play, and we need to plan ahead for them. Making sure that our TIFs are successful. We did redo a TIF policy in the previous year. We're still working on things, but we need to make sure that the development agreements are solid, that we have a couple of good feet to stand on, and that we can support not only the TIFs, but that the TIFs can support the community as well.
I think your time is up. I'm sorry. Grace, do you have a question?
Yep. And how is the city of Oshkosh addressing the problem of lead water pipes? Are there any funds to assist homeowners with replacing their water laterals?
And we'll start with Caroline. Lead water pipes.
Yes, yes. As Council Member Palmieri indicated in her opening statements, I believe, there is a program in place through our engineering department. In our previous council meeting, there were many bills that came from our finance director indicating a refund of $1,500 to people who took advantage of the program. So we do have a program in place. It is working. Our citizens are utilizing it, and I do support it.
Okay, good. Lori, give us some more details about how the program works.
Sure. So I believe that there is an application process that folks who meet the eligibility requirements can go through City Hall for that program. And I'm very excited that this city, the staff took the time to pursue those grants. And those grants then get to be passed on to folks who need them. And that's, keep in mind, that is for the homeowner's side or the property side from the city stop at the curb to the home, because the city takes care of it up to that curb step. But then what was, the gap was literally between that curb step and the home.
Okay, thank you. Matt, do you have any comments on this?
Absolutely, yeah. Obviously, providing safe drinking water is extremely important. And this is an old community. We've got upwards of 25,000 residents or homes in this community. I believe the stats are somewhere north of 70% are older than 1980, leading to believe at least, you know, sixty, maybe 60% of the homes in the city of Oshkosh have possible lead pipes servicing their homes. That's a severe problem. However, some of the concerns I have with the program are, we're piggybacking the water replacement lines with the sanitary sewer and the road construction. And if a elderly person who's on a fixed income can't afford to pay the road work, that they don't even have a choice in having done it in front of their home, how are they going to find the additional $1,500, $2,500, $4,000 to replace the water lines in their old homes? So finding funding sources for the full cost is something that this council should undertake for certain segments of the community.
Okay, thank you. Steve Herman?
Thank you. As both my fellow council members pretty well explained the program, I'll just piggyback on a couple of things that was said. It's not just for street reconstruction. So if you're living in an area of the city that your street is not being done, you can get the lead pipe, as Council Member Palmieri said, from the sidewalk to your side of the service, and it's a 50-50 match in the city. Currently, that's the only funding program that's out there. Could the city develop a funding program where it's 100%? There's been some discussion of that on the city level. Where that funding would come from, we currently haven't come up with that. But the best opportunity for all our citizens to get their lead pipes replaced is if their street is being redone. Or if you have a concern, check into the program that the city has put in place. I think it's a reasonable program, and it, 14 homes took advantage of it this year already. And there are a lot of other programs out there that are available that citizens can take advantage of.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just add one little thing to that? And that is, I do recall, too, that citizens can call City Hall, and they will actually send somebody out to help them identify whether they, if they have a question on whether they have lead pipe or not.
Okay, great. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Let's go to parks. Oshkosh currently has considerably less than national standards for park acreage. In the brand-new Parks report, about approximately 53% of recommended larger community park acreage and 60% of neighborhood park acreage. So we've got a lot of, a big gap there. As a city council member, what steps would you take to address the critical need for park and recreation land? And I think we'll start with Matt.
Thank you. Obviously, we do have a lack of parks in this community, at least, you know, acreage-wise in comparison to that study. I think what that fails to take into account is other land that's available as park or recreational space in this community, whether that's Winnabell County Park that's still within the city district, whether it's our neighborhood schools, where every single school is a neighborhood park. My kids, you know, love playing at Franklin and, you know, any other school that we happen to be at. Those are all neighborhood parks, and that land is vital. So working with our partners in the school district and at the county level, we definitely can find ways to make sure that those parks that we do have are maintained. Adding more park space is going to be difficult. We're landlocked. We've had prior years of, well, bad planning when it came to residential expansion. I think the council and the Parks Department is trying to work on something out in the Sawyer Creek area to take care of a lack of park space out in that area as well.
Okay, thank you. Caroline?
Thank you. Going back to Lake Shore again, that took a big hit on that percentage. And I do think we have to be very careful moving forward in that. But also going back to what Deputy Mayor Herman said, it was another goal that we gave the city manager to look at our neighborhoods. There might be opportunities with some areas of this town to take out a house, to create little pocket parks. With the help of our neighborhood associations, which is still a growing, very successful program here in town, we can identify those areas and find the needs of each individual neighborhood and suit that and possibly take down some blight in the meantime. So kind of a win-win if we work together.
Okay, thank you. Steve Herman?
Thank you. And I do serve on the Parks Board, and that discussion has come up. To Mr. Mugirar's point, that was one of the discussion items at the Parks Board was to work closer with Winnabell County and that, because the study is strictly city of Oshkosh-owned parks. And, you know, Winnabell County, even though it is in the city of Oshkosh, County Park doesn't count. But one other thing we've done in our municipal code is when a subdivision is being developed, or even apartment complexes being developed, they have to dedicate some parkland in that subdivision for a park for their residents. And part of that also includes, if they don't have the land available, then they have to pay the city like $50,000, and that money gets put aside for future parks. With all our waterways and things, we're pretty landlocked. I think the other opportunity we could do, even though it's not in the city, is work closer with our surrounding townships. In our agreements, to have them start to look at putting parks that border the city that our citizens could use as a lot of town residents come into the city of Oshkosh and use our parks.
Okay, thank you. Lori Palmieri.
Excellent question. And Ms. Pansky hit it right on the head when she talked about neighborhoods and associations being involved as part of a solution to this problem. I would not be sitting here tonight or on this council dais were it not for this very discussion. That's how our neighborhood association started, was over the issue of not having enough park space and approaching the Parks Advisory Board for Central City. I believe the national standard for park space recommendation, I could be mistaken, but I think it's 10 acres for every 5,000 people. But we are sorely lacking, and we don't even come close. I would have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Mugirar because I don't believe we're landlocked. We have many undeveloped lots in this city that are sitting, just going to waste because we're waiting for this next big magical development to come along. Six blocks on Jefferson Street, you know, I think we can all see these. So while we do have parkland dedication, many of our developers opt to pay a fee instead of dedicating that parkland.
Okay, thank you very much. Grace, do you have a question?
How do you feel about the idea of Oshkosh as a sanctuary city?
Question came from the audience. And we'll start with Lori Palmieri.
You know, this is obviously an issue that is being looked at all around the country. I believe that we will be looking to see what California does and what results from the federal decisions that are made. I would support some aspects of it, but I have to wait and see how things come to fruition at the federal level before we go into that deep dive.
Okay. Steve Herman?
Thank you. I would agree. We don't have, we wouldn't have enough information currently at this point. I know that there was a rally a couple of weekends, I think it was two Saturdays ago. A lot depends on the federal government, on what they look at and what they're requiring. And that should, it goes back to inclusiveness, really. I think, you know, if we're inclusive and we diversify, I think we can come to a solution. Unfortunately, we have to come to a solution. There's too many people that are affected by this law and this decision. And I don't know that it can come down to city, to city, to city. It has to become a federal law, and then a state law, and then bring it to the local level to finalize it.
Okay, thank you. Caroline?
Well, as a human being, I definitely support opening up my city to anybody who is in need at any time. As a city council member and a steward of taxpayer dollars, it is a responsibility of mine to make sure that we can afford this, that we can take this on and make sure that they are just as comfortable as everybody else that I represent. I do agree with my fellow council members that a lot of this will rely on decisions that are made in the near future, and how that affects my decision should one come across the dais will be determined at that time.
Okay, thank you. Matt Mugirar?
Well, obviously, it's a hot-button issue and very current in our times. And it really does depend on what happens at the national level, specifically in the White House and certain members of Congress. That said, I can't support a sanctuary city without some other guidance from the federal government. We, as a council member, you take an oath to uphold the Constitution, the laws of the land. And until those laws are changed, you're bound to uphold those laws as written, not the selective ones that you'd like to follow or the ones that feel good at the time. So while it is a, definitely a hot-button issue, and immigration is essentially important to, you know, local, state, and national interests, that's a national law that really has to come from the federal level.
Okay. Special event fees are being challenged by the Oshkosh farmers market. Someone from the audience asked, could room tax be used to offset some special event fees? Should some events be exempt? Topic of special event fees. And let's see, who hasn't had a number one question? Steve Herman?
Well, I can't specifically speak to the farmers market currently because there is decisions being made that I can't address. But as far as the other part of the question, no, room tax cannot currently be used. The room tax law is specific by the state of Wisconsin. It has to go towards, a city designates, and we designate 70% of our room tax to go to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to bring, to promote Oshkosh and promote that. Percentage also goes to the Grand Opera House, and 30% goes back to the city. But we cannot designate it for a special event by state statute.
Okay. Matt Mugirar?
Our special events fee was so poorly created, I can't begin to describe how many deficiencies I find within our special events fee structure. The farmers market, if it doesn't qualify for an exemption, I don't know what possibly could. And if you create a ordinance that the city did with its special events fee or special events process, and you include a way to provide ways to waive those fees, and you just did it as lip service, then what was the point of creating the ordinance in the first place? So if you're going to do those things- So if you're going to do those things, if you're going to create ordinances and actually follow through with the true intentions of those votes, then you need to waive those fees for a farmers market that supports this entire community. There's several other events as well that could definitely qualify for that, and I suspect, I suspect council will see those shortly. One final thing, though, is that we have a one-size-fits-all approach to our special events, as well as plenty of other programs, TIFs and anything else. This is not a one-size-fits-all solution. A one-size-fits-all solution doesn't work for this. We need one for for-profit events and for not-for-profits.
Okay, thank you very much. Lori Palmieri.
I advocated last year for us to reevaluate our special events in a structured, tiered way with multiple criteria. Council decided to, as a group, address only the extraordinary special event fees. And I would agree with Ms. Mugirar, we could definitely use a second look at that ordinance and that process. When it comes to the farmers market specifically, as Mr. Herman said, we cannot use room tax, that it's my understanding we can't use room tax. Are there other areas that we could, again, look at? There are some other creative solutions that the staff, working together with that event, are looking at. Again, we can't share the specifics at this point, because we don't know them all, but yes, I absolutely do support the farmers market as not fitting into the special event as defined.
Caroline?
They both touched on the room tax aspect of that, and we also already have an exemption checklist that is in play as well, that we can use for some of these special events as well. Can't really go into too much at this time, as they stated before, so I would encourage you all to either attend on Tuesday or watch it online, and we can have this conversation probably all over again. But I do support the farmers market, it is definitely a community asset, you cannot deny that, and I do look forward to working out a solution with them, hopefully on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you very much. Unfortunately, we're out of time, so this does conclude the forum for the Oshkosh City Council. The election is Tuesday, April 3. You may vote for three of these four candidates, because there are three seats, for a two-year term as Oshkosh City Councilor. After a brief break, we will return with the Oshkosh area's school board, portion of the forum. Let's give them a round of applause.[1728.12][1728.12][music]